Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 26th. For introductions, my name is Todd Wilchon. I'm the county board chair this year. On my left, fellow commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Deb Shore. On my right, commissioners Roma Amundson and vice-chair commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us this morning from the county attorney's office, Mr. David Durbin. From the county clerk's office, the clerk, Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. And from the county board office, the chief administrative officer, Kerry Egan, and our chief, or I'm sorry, our deputy chief administrative officer, Ann Ames. Now, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on Wall 3 of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, September 19th. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approve of all claims processed through September 26th, 2017.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation, U.S. Rail Safety Week. Roger Feigard, Executive Director, Railroad Transportation Safety District.
Good morning, Mr. Feigard.
Good morning, commissioners. Roger Feigard, representing the Lincoln, City of Lincoln, Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District. I'm here this morning and I just want to commend and thank the commissioners for taking this opportunity to declare this week National Safety Rail Week. And while this is the first ever National Safety Rail Week, I think that we need to stop and realize that this is not surprising for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. The city and the county have a long history and a commitment to rail safety. Over 46 years ago, with enabling legislation from the state legislature, the city and county formed the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District. And over those 46 years, the city and the county have seen significant reduction in fatalities and improvements of hundreds of crossings for safety, has built overpasses, and that work continues today as the RTSD continues to have a number of major initiatives with railroad, the city and the county to continue that work. But maybe the, one of the most important things in all this is we need to remind ourselves and our citizens that number one, they need to observe and be careful. The motto of Operation Lifesaver, the national organization, is stop, look, listen, and live. We just need people to be careful, to be safe. It's a tragedy when we use a life because someone has chosen to behave poorly, forgets or makes a mistake. And in the important words of one of the RTSD's greatest supporters, Harlan Layton, "The train always wins." So again, thank you, commissioners, for this proclamation this week, and we need to continue to remind everybody to be safe and protect their families and their lives.
Any questions? Thank you.
Could we ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record?
Absolutely. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
This isn't a matter of proclaiming the week of September 24th through the 30th of 2017 as U.S. Rail Safety Week. Whereas Lancaster County recognizes the importance of railroad safety across the United States, a person or vehicle is hit by a train every three hours. And whereas in 2016, 1,104 people in the U.S. were killed or injured in vehicle-train collisions, and another 980 people were killed or injured while walking on or around railroad tracks. And whereas Operation Lifesaver, Inc. is a nonprofit public safety education and awareness organization dedicated to reducing collisions, fatalities, and injuries on railroad tracks and at crossings. And whereas Operation Lifesaver, Inc. is collaborating with a large coalition of safety advocates to promote railroad safety through the observance of U.S. Rail Safety Week during the week of September 24th through September 30th of 2017. And whereas the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County have established a Railroad Transportation Safety District for the purpose of increasing public safety on railroad tracks and crossings throughout Lancaster County. And whereas Lancaster County is committed to educating our community about railroad safety, as many accidents on railroad tracks and crossings are preventable, and therefore Lancaster County supports the goals of Operation Lifesaver, Inc. and RTSD. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September 24th through the 30th of 2017 as U.S. Rail Safety Week, and be it further resolved that the Lancaster County Board encourages all residents of Lancaster County to educate themselves on railroad safety practices dated this 26th day of September 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
And should we go to new business 6A, which is a resolution proclaiming September 24th through the 30th of 2017 as U.S. Rail Safety Week?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution proclaiming September 24th through the 30th as U.S. Rail Safety Week. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, a public hearing setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior year tax request for Lancaster County and the Rural Library for Lancaster County. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony I ought to give is a truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning, Dennis Meyer, county budget and fiscal officer. This should be the last time you see me for the budget for this current year. We're in our last step here. On September 7th, we adopted the budget. There's one additional step that's still out there. Statute requires that if your property tax request changes from the previous year, and it really means in dollars, that you hold another special hearing, adopt a resolution, get it to the county clerk's office, because within the next couple of weeks, the county clerk's office will bring the levies for all political subdivisions to the county board for final action. So basically with this hearing, we are required to publish notice, and in that notice, what it requires is you publish what was the tax dollar amount last year, what is the tax dollar amount this year, you know, and what would have the tax rate been if you would have kept the tax dollars the same with the new valuation this year. So it just kinda shows the public what's kinda going on with the tax dollars. So basically, if you remember, our levy for the county was at 27.53 cents. It will show that in the resolution. It will now show that our levy will be at 26.6576. It also shows the dollar amount that it went from a little over 64.4 million up to about 67.8 million. It also then, because the Rural Library is within the county budget, I always include that in the resolution, but we also include that as part of the 15 cents. But I just include it in here just because if somebody looks at the county budget overall, the Rural Library budget is in there. So this resolution today that will be adopted is just kinda the final step, getting the levy information to the county clerk's office so that all the levies can get finalized.
Any questions for Mr. Myers? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify and support, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, please see the correlating items.
6B is a resolution in a matter of setting the 2017-2018 property tax requests for Lancaster County at a different amount than that of the prior year.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution setting the 2017-2018 property tax request for Lancaster County at a different amount than that of a prior year. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is unfinished business, an amendment to kind of contract C-13-335 with inmate calling solutions, doing businesses ICS solutions for inmate phone services at adult detention center. Amendment renews the contract from September 23rd, 2017, through July 22nd, 2021. Commissions are payable to the county by IC solutions shall be subject to minimum annual guarantees of $330,000 on telephone service and $12,000 on video visitation service revenues. The contract that was attached to the agenda on Friday, Friday has been amended, the amended copy is available for inspection at the front of the hearing room.
Good morning, Brad Johnson, Director of Lancaster County Department of Corrections. So this is a renewal of the current contract that we have been utilizing with ICS, who provide the inmate phone services for our facility. I guess it kinda got complicated because I wanted to try and build in video visitation with them as well. I guess a little brief history, when we built the current jail, the video visitation system was a part of that contract, so it's kind of a standalone system. We support it. We do all the maintenance on it. We have to pay a service contract with a different provider who maintains the software and such. So you're gonna, if, across the country, if you looked at other facilities, the overwhelming majority of them, video visitation is tied to the phone system. It's all handled by one con contract and maintenance and all that is handled by them. So we started noticing that the current system was starting to have reliability issues. Remember, this, you know, this equipment's been in use for four years, and it was actually purchased, you know, at least two years before that, so we're going on, you know, six, seven year old equipment now. So we've started replacing a fair amount of that stuff, and, you know, you can talk with the public defender's office who uses it, that they're, I'm sure they'd agree that they've noticed any increase in downtime. And so I saw this contract was coming up, and I thought maybe this would be the time to try and envelop all those together. So this contract would include inmate phones at the FCC recommended rates. It would, it involves this company replacing all the video visitation equipment and providing training to our staff, and it involves them maintaining it and upgrading the software when it's necessary. The other thing that I wanted to try and envelop in that is the ability for individuals to have video visitations over the internet. So when the system gets up, somebody in California, if they have a relative or a loved one in our jail, would be able to have a video visit from their home into our facility. There is a fee, fee for that, of course, as it's, as you'll notice in the contract, that's 50 cents a minute in order to do that. But video visitation, as it's being done now, if you come to our facility and do it, would still be free. And it would continue to be free for the public defender's office to have internet visits with their, with their clients. So it's just kind of a, it's an additional method to have visits if folks so choose, otherwise they can continue to do it the way they are now.
So any questions for Mr. Johnson? One question, I guess, going to the video visitation for the general public, would that be, I mean, through FaceTime or Skype or whatever?
It actually goes through the provider's web page. So yeah, it's very similar to Skype or FaceTime or whatever, but it's hosted by them and it works through their soft software. The other thing I guess I need to mention, I forgot, is, you know, it talks about our revenues and so forth here. That money is all allocated toward your inmate benefit fund, which pays or contributes to the costs of the different programming that we do, parenting classes, AANA, religious activities, the food service program that we've been doing is supported through these funds. So a lot of these funds go towards providing services to the inmate population as well.
Commissioner Brinkman?
You mentioned that the video calling is free for the public defender's office. Does that also apply to private defense counsel?
At this point, it will not, no.
Is there a reason for the difference?
I think it'd be, it'd be difficult to try and limit it to those individuals. I don't know. I'm not sure how we would work that type of a contract, to be honest. And most of them that I've, who have approached me about this over the years have indicated a willingness to pay for it because of the convenience factor.
Okay. Because the alternative would probably be in-person visits?
They have to drive out in person, yes.
Commissioner Shore?
Did you, hear you say that they'll be replacing all the existing equipment?
Yes.
So the bank of phones in the lobby and the individual units within the pods?
Yes.
Okay.
And all the backbone, the servers and all, all that will be replaced.
Okay.
The actual cab cabinets, or whatever you wanna call them, that they're housed in, those are all, will all change as well.
Okay. Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with inmate calling solutions for inmate phone services at the adult detention center. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thanks, Brad.
New business 6C is to be held. 6D is consulting services contract with Siegel-Marco Advisors to provide annual investment and administrative review of the Lancaster County 401A retirement plan and the 457B deferred compensation program. The county will pay $28,500 for the services. Term of the contract is January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consulting services contract with Siegel-Marco Advisors to provide the annual investment and administrative review for the county's retirement plan and the deferred compensation plan. Mr. Egan?
I would indicate, I'd like you to go ahead and approve this, but Frank Picarelli will be with us this Thursday for the investment review, and he will have two originals with him. And so I'd say approve, subject to receiving the signed originals from Siegel, and those will be with us on Thursday.
Okay. Do we need to make that amendment in the motion?
I'll make my motion to approve, subject to receipt of the two original signed copies on Thursday.
We already have a signed copy, correct?
Did he send them to you? He was gonna, he told me on the phone he was going to bring them Thursday.
I thought that we were going to receive an electronic copy, so...
He did not get that done. I wanted that for the record. He'll bring the originals on Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine if we do it that way.
Okay.
I'll second Deb's second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the original motion to approve the contract with Siegel-Marco Advisors. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is an interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman for one sheriff's deputy for law enforcement services within the corporate limits of the City of Hickman. The City of Hickman will pay $9,190.41 per month for the services. Term of the agreement is October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018.
Good morning, Lancaster County Sheriff Kerry Wagner. This is an agreement we've had with Hickman for, oh gosh, since the early 80s or late 70s, where we have a deputy sheriff who provides dedicated law enforcement services to the City of Hickman. They spend their entire duty shift week there, and in Hickman reimburse this for the deputy and their vehicle. There's also an additional portion of this contract that has to do with overtime, and there are times when Hickman would like to have additional hours of coverage for special events, Hickman heydays, for instance, and it's a built-in overtime component. So this year, they wanted to increase the number of hours of overtime, so that's a little bit different than years past, but this is an ongoing contract that we've had for 35 years.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff?
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman for the provision of law enforcement services on an as-needed basis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman for the provision of law enforcement services within the city on an as-needed basis. The sheriff shall sign one deputy for duty and provide one sheriff's cruiser. The county shall be reimbursed at the deputy's overtime rate for the services provided, and shall be reimbursed 54 cents per mile for cruiser maintenance. Total compensation, the county shall not exceed $4,500. Term of the agreement is October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with the City of Hickman for the provisions of law enforcement services within the city. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 6G is the annual performance to quality report to the Commission on Accreditation of Rehabilitation Facilities for the Mental Health Crisis Center of Lancaster County.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the annual performance to quality report to the Commission on Accreditation of Rehabilitation Facilities for the Crisis Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is an interlocal agreement with the State of Nebraska Probation Administration for two probation officers to provide additional pre-sentence investigation report services to decrease the time needed to complete pre-sentence investigations of inmates housed by the Lancaster County Corrections Department. The county will pay up to $61,885 for the services. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2017 through July 30th, 2018.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with the State and Nebraska Probation Administration to provide additional pre-sentence investigation report services for individuals housed at the Lancaster County Corrections Department. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 6I is an interlocal agreement with Kearney County for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of $276 per juvenile per day.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with Kearney County for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
No.
Motion carries four, yes, one, no. L is a contract with Nebraska Printing Center to provide the annual supply of envelopes and printing. Term of the contract is November 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2018. The cost of county is not to exceed $25,000.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Nebraska Printing Center to provide the annual supply of envelopes and printing. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K are contracts with the following to provide the annual supply of greater blades. Term of the contracts are one year from the date of execution. This includes Midwest Service and Sales Company in amount not to exceed $34,483.68, and Ware Parts and Equipment Company, Inc., in amount not to exceed $19,356.93.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve two contracts with providers for the annual supply of greater blades. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is an amendment to kind of contract C-16-407 for SuperSteam for carpet cleaning. The amendment removes Lancaster County from the contract.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with SuperSteam for carpet cleaning. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 6M is an amendment to kind of contract C-14-402 with Snap-on Industrial, a division of IDSC Holdings LLC using the State of Nebraska contract number 14033OC for small hand and power tools and accessories. Amendment extends the contract from September 20th, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. The cost of county is not to exceed $100.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Snap-on Industrial for small hand and power tools and accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is a change order to kind of contract C-17-250 with Outback Fence and Stain to change the specified gate posts and hinges installed at five county gravel sites for an increase of $5,240.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the change order to the county contract with Outback Fence and Stain. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 6O is a grant contract with L Central D Los Americas in amount of $51,434 for the Jovan Noble Program. The contract is funded by the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th... Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Steve Solario, and I'm the youth program coordinator with Joven Noble and Latino Leaders. Just kind of want to tell you guys a little bit about our amazing program we have. So I've been with this program for a couple of years now, and I'm very proud of this program. Our whole purpose of the program is to get our students from middle school, high school, get them into college. So it's been very successful these past few years. Last year alone, we had eighteen seniors in our program, and all eighteen seniors were accepted into a college. Eleven of those were accepted at U N L, and the rest were accepted at Southeast Community College. When I first started, we only had one program running here in Lincoln, and now, in the couple, past couple of years, we're at fourteen programs. So the schools love it. I mean, the schools have been very receptive of it. They have actually implemented the program during school. They have taken us from after-school into actual a class, classroom setting. So it's an amazing program that I am very proud of. We, in the past, in the past year, past reporting year, we have reported higher engagement in schools with the students, improvement in attendance with our students, the behavior in our students. We have reported from counselors, our students have been doing better. We have also seen a decrease in gang activity. When I first started, there was a huge issue with our students joining gangs, and I think for now, we have controlled that in most of our schools where we have been seeing those The performance of our students, I mean, they want to go to school now, they want to go to our program. I think that's why our students, that's why the schools want to implement the program during school, and that's why some of the schools look forward to coming on Monday and Tuesdays and the rest of the week to come see us. And we're very active with them during school. We come, we do school visits, we do attendance, we check their grades and behavior reports. So it's a program I'm very, very proud of, and hopefully we can keep growing this program. So, thank you.
So one question that I have, you've mentioned the number of seniors that participate in the program. What about overall? And then the scope of the program? What age do you start?
Our program runs from ages ten to seventeen and eighteen years old. Right now, our biggest group of students is middle schools. Middle schools, we're at five different middle schools, and we're at two, we're actually at three different high schools now. So it's, last year, it was harder last year to get our high school students to come to a program because it was after-school. So now the schools have accepted the program during school. So we actually, a successful story is last week, we had, we had an informational meeting at Northeast, and we were expecting thirty-five, forty students, and we had two hundred Latino students show up to the information meeting. So the school was like amazed, or like, they're like, how are we even gonna provide a program for two hundred Latino students? And the program has been, the word, the students are talking about it, they want to be involved in this program. So for us to have two hundred students show up to an informational meeting, it was an amazing thing, so...
Well, it sounds like a successful program, and it also sounds like you're on the right track.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work. I think Commissioner Amundson had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we really do appreciate the effort that you have put into it. It's showing magnificent results, and we really do appreciate what it is that you do for the young people of Lancaster County, particularly the Latino students.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shore?
My question is, is there a parent component to this, and are you seeing younger siblings of children that maybe went through the program the first couple of years?
Yes, so, so younger kids want to join us, the little brothers, little sisters want to join already. We have been seeing, as soon as they go into, it's kind of like a trend now where they, they go into sixth grade, and they're already like asking the counselors in the schools, like, how do we join the program? They're looking, they're looking for these programs. And the amazing thing I also seen is our seniors are graduating, are coming back to us and volunteering. They want, and that's why, how we're growing this year is because our volunteers want to implement programs with us now, so. So it's kind of like a cycle, our fifth, our transition from fifth to sixth graders, they're looking forward to see that, that bond, that brotherhood, that sisterhood of, you know, the programs and to find somewhere where they fit in. And then our seniors are graduating, are coming back to us, and they're wanting to volunteer with us, so it's a beautiful thing.
Commissioner Avery?
Is there something about your program, something you do, something that you symbolize that attracts all these kids?
I think we're just, they can, I think they just look up to us. They see, they see something they can familiarize themselves with, culture. I think our program targets a lot of our culture, and they feel they can come to somebody who is from the same culture or that can understand them, and they can come to us. They have issues, they go to their counselors and like, can we talk to Steve? Can we talk to our coordinators? And it's just an amazing thing. I'm still trying to figure out too, why we have such an amazing numbers, but it's been growing very fast in the past two years. Seeing it from, go from one year ago, having twelve students, to having this quarter alone over a hundred fifty students register already, just this quarter alone, it's beautiful.
Seems to me if you could identify one or two activities or something that distinguishes parts of your program and find out what is really working, you could replicate that and perhaps even grow more.
Yes, that's our, that's what we hope for.
I think it's probably Steve is the one.
Right?
He's the magic ingredient.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Other questions for Mr. Solario? Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with L Centro de las Americas for the Joven Noble Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a grant contract with Salvation Army, an amount of forty thousand dollars for the Shields Unite Teen Night Program. The contract is funded by juvenile justice prevention funds. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Stanford Bradley. I'm the director of the Salvation Army on Twenty-seventh and Potter Street. This is, I want to say, our fourth year being funded through you guys for our Teen Nights Up program. Teen Night, we've done for a while, but we just, you know, got funding for it through you guys not too long ago. We have, on a Friday night, from eight o'clock to eleven o'clock, a teen night. We average about seventy-five kids a night. We open the gym, we let them, you know, do gym games, we let them do stuff in our after-school program, which is video games and all that stuff. The biggest addition to the Sub program last year was we added a Young Leaders Club. And in the past, we've done tons of sports, tons of sports, but not every kid plays sports. So it was, we were missing a lot of kids by just having sporting events, so we added a Young Leaders Club. Young Leaders Club is actually the highlight of the program now. Last year, we had thirty-five kids that joined the program, and what it is, is we have officers, three resource officers, that come, and they're also a part of this Young Leaders Club. The, the unique thing was, we didn't tell these kids that officers were in the group. We let them come to the meetings two or three different times, and then the third time, we told them, we said, hey, we're gonna tell you, you know, a little bit about ourself, a little bit about our background. The officers introduced themselves as police officers, and the kids jaw-dropped. They, they didn't think that officers could be as, as cool as the officers that we have, and it's really been tearing down stereotypes that kids in our neighborhood have of law enforcement. Kids like me, I grew up in the Salvation Army myself, and, you know, when the first interaction you have with a law enforcement officer is taking your mom away, or taking an uncle or a cousin, it kind of makes you feel a certain way, you know, about law enforcement. So we're trying to change those stereotypes in this group. We do a lot of volunteer things, we go on outings together, we eat dinner together every meeting, kind of family style. We talk about things that are going on in the world right now. We do current events to try to keep kids engaged in what's going on, not only in our community, but throughout the states. We really appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve the kids in this way because it's something that they've never had before, and it's information that they wouldn't get at home, you know, for whatever reasons. And so we're very appreciative of the opportunity to be able to, to serve these kids and tear down some of the barriers between law enforcement and kids in our community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bradley, and Ken, appreciate your work. We obviously were out and saw you in action a few months ago when we were serving dinner at the Salvation Army, so it's good to see you again.
Your voice is a little bit lower today. We heard you speaking, trying to corral that group of forty kids, and you can really belt it out when you need to.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's what they, that's what they paid me for.
One of many things, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley? No, again, thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Salvation Army for the Shields Unite Teen Night Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q are contracts with the following medical providers for specialized medical care of general assistance clients. Providers will be reimbursed at the Medicaid rate, and this includes Carney Physicians Network LLC doing business as Lincoln Anesthesiology Group, Nebraska Specialist Network doing business in Nebraska Heart Institute, and the Physician Network.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve contracts with three medical providers for specialized medical care of general assistance clients. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number seven are consent items. Receive and place on file the following reports. County Treasurer's Report on 2014 Distress Warrants, County Sheriff's Monthly Report for August 2017, Utility number fifteen ninety-five, allowing Lincoln Electric System to install a new transmission line between South Thirty-eighth Street and Bennett Road to South Ninety-first Street and Highway Two, there is no cost to county. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and GSK Consumer Health, Inc., formerly known as Navartus Consumer Health, Inc., North Hundred and Twelve Street and Alvo Road, an amount of one thousand eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Setting a public hearing for an application of a Class C liquor license for Newmark Golf LLC and a corporate manager liquor license for Kinsey D. Bauer, in connection with a Class C liquor license for Newmark Golf LLC on Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand seventeen,